Oh, we're sorry.
What do we always look at you?
JJ is on leave this week.
They are.
Do you want one? Do you want us to make copy of one real quick, or are we good? Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 6D, professional services contractor Steve Byerlin. I thought I communicated last week that I'm uncomfortable with that. I did read it, but he's a very good friend of mine, so at the very least, I would have to recuse myself from any vote. I think I expressed to the board last week that I certainly would be in favor of reimbursing him for travel outside the county. I assumed that was going to be $400 or $500, and I think when we have other volunteers go outside of the county, it could also help establish a direction for, to the extent we can, also compensate those folks. So until this has a chance to go before the public in some kind of a workshop or a better direction, I will either recuse myself or I'll have to vote no. So I would like to take it off the agenda. I think it puts, because he is a good friend, it puts me in an impossible situation on this, except for his expenses for travel. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the only amendment on the agenda I'm requesting.
I'm in favor of that also.
Of?
Taking it off the agenda, for now.
And, okay, so what would we like to do with this? Because I think we've already agreed a couple of weeks ago that Mr. Byerlin's efforts in this matter have been paramount. So what would, where would you like for this to go?
What I thought we were voting on, Mr. Chair, I saw a $3,000 bill, and honestly, I did not have time to review it thoroughly, but that's when I decided that this was not the best direction for the board. I am not the best direction for Mr. Byerlin. Proceeding from here, if it's just travel to Salem for his testimony, and this is no lack of confidence as far as a natural resource advisor to this Board of Commissioners, not only just on fish issues, certainly forestry issues, he is, in my view, absolutely tops. But that's not the issue. The issue is, are we going to compensate him outside of travel? And all of a sudden, I heard, and I didn't read this, but I heard $55, and I'm not sure where that came from. I was shocked when I read it Friday, late. So, per hour, excuse me. So, did I miss something, Council Huddle?
No, I just wanted to offer a suggestion for the board and the chair, if it's okay.
Well, one moment, please. Ms. Gold, where would you like to see this go? Where would you like to see the next action on this?
Well, I had some concerns previously because of the pay that was going to be done for things that were done previously as a volunteer. That bothered me, because a lot of volunteers do a lot of things, and they're never paid. And when I looked at the contract, I'll have to agree with Commissioner Boyce, that I thought the rate was rather high when we're paying John Hitt $24.99 an hour, so...
Very good point.
Those were my concerns.
Okay. What do we pay attorneys?
Is he an attorney?
I'm asking you a question. Do you know what we pay attorneys?
Well, the one that we have, Shalilla, is that her name?
Jill.
Yeah, I think she's like $50 bucks an hour. I figured that out once.
I think she's, I think she, her rate technically is probably less than that. We'd pay her $2,000 a month.
I'm not talking about County Council. I'm talking about if you were to hire an expert attorney to come in and testify in front of this board, or do some research on, for this board, to be able to testify in front of our legislative, our Congress, what would we be, what did we pay the attorney on Mr. Boyce's case?
I don't know. I actually...
A lot of money.
If I could, if I could.
I'm just asking if Ms. Gold remembers.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Was it, what, $285?
$285 an hour for professional services? Okay. Just a question. Go ahead, Council.
Oh, thanks. Just to answer the question about what we pay outside attorneys, I have some information on that, because at a different part of the meeting, I was tasked on presenting some information about the County Council, but I've got contract excerpts from other municipal jurisdictions who pay their legal outside counsel $190 to $200 bucks an hour.
I just, I just want to reiterate something to this board. Mr. Byerlin's qualifications speak for themselves. He's been a professional in this industry for more than 45 years. I remember hearing, and I don't, I'm not saying, quote me on this as an exact, but I remember hearing something about Governor Kitzhoffer wouldn't even allow any fish legislation to go through the state without Mr. Byerlin reviewing it and giving it an okay first. He has been on the Hill in Salem for decades. His expertise, as you've heard, or read in letters from ODF and W, they agree with every facet of what he brought up. They were actually at the meeting in Jackson County last week when he testified in front of the Board of Commissioners there. His expertise in this is not in question, in my opinion. I will say that I'm a little bit surprised by this. If you'd like to take it off the agenda, that's fine. We can do that. But would you like to move this forward to a workshop, then? And when would you like to do that? What do we have available, Ms. Melzer?
Offhand, I'm not sure when the next workshop is. I think we're looking at two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Maybe two segments here. Number one, just in full disclosure here, I'd encourage Mr. Byerlin over a month ago to please keep track of his receipts, and I would do my best to go before the board and see if we could have that reimbursement. And it's gone from, if I understand correctly, and I surely could be wrong, it's gone from that to, yeah, I would love to have him on board. It's just the process caught me off guard, and I think the public needs to have a very clear picture what, and how it might also affect future contracts, and we've been spending a little time on that. Nobody, least of all me, is disagreeing with his qualifications and the benefit this could be to the county. So, the first segment, let's see if we can come back and figure out what that travel is, as I understand, three different locations: Grants Pass, Medford, and Salem. He might have went to Salem twice. I'm not absolutely sure of that. Let's get him, if the board agrees, let's get him compensated on that, and then let's see about the long-term picture, picture for what we would like to have him do. So there's no agree, disagreement whatsoever in his qualifications, to the contrary, Mr. Chair.
So why don't we look to move this to a workshop in two weeks, then? And I'll ask, or Ms. Melzer, could you ask Mr. Byerlin to provide any other receipts that he has from his expenses, ink, paper? I mean, I think he told me three months ago he had $80 in ink in this for all the folders and everything he developed for our senators and congressmen in Washington. So, the other issue I want to say, as you mentioned, that he's a good friend of yours, and it's been noted that he's my brother-in-law, which he is not. I've had an arms-length relationship with Mr. Byerlin, but his mother-in-law and my father-in-law are together, yes, but they are not legally married, so he is not my brother-in-law. I will say, in County Council, you may have more information on this legally. There are laws in the state of Oregon, because it is a rural state, that allow for close relationships and/or hiring of people that are related or have relationships because of the lack of...
Extra professional personnel.
Exactly. And I'm not sure that there, what the language on those laws is, but I do know the state allows more latitude on that. Am I correct? We could research that.
I, I think technically, the restrictions in Chapter 244 against taking part in a action that would have a favorable economic outcome to your family, or yourself, or your business, I'm just, I just don't think, the way you've described the family relationship, that he qualifies as family under the Chapter 244 conflict of interest. So I'm, I don't even know that we need to look to that secondary analysis you're talking about.
I just think, in a matter of full disclosure, I just wanted to put that on the record as well. I will say also, the Corps of Engineers, for those of you that don't know, was just found against, for almost $300 million on a case very, very similar to this, in Washington. This is a $390 million bill. We're going to be sending the Corps of Engineers to rebuild the Rogue River Coal Fish, Coal River Fish Hatchery, and to restore the spawning grounds that we've lost from the failures that the Corps of Engineers, under their contracts, have failed to do. So, Commissioner Boyce?
And do you agree that Mr. Byerlin gets almost 100% of the credit for that discovery, that challenge, that push?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And whether we prevail in that invoice or not, at some point, I think as long as the public is fully aware of the extent of his work, I think, I think we'll get support on that, and I think we can be very transparent about that. And I'm not saying we have not been to this point. I'm just a little uneasy. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Just another addition.
Ms. Melzer?
Just another addition. And I'm not sure, Council can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but with number nine under the executive session, I just wanted to add what that executive session is for. It's RS 192.660 parent, two-parent, parents, small D parent, to deliberate with designated labor negotiators.
Okay. All right, so back to, back to the agenda. So you're, can I get a motion that we, we move this to the nearest workshop, that we invite Mr. Byerlin, and anyone from the public that would like to be there for that workshop to have comment, so that we can get this behind us?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to add to the motion that we get clarification on his invoices with the intent of board approval, hopefully to, to take care of that.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Because JJ's not here, I'll take the role. Commissioner Boy, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
And I vote aye, as Chair. All right, so any other amendments to the agenda? Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll take role, Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, number three, we have public comments. Ms. Connie Hunter. Ms. Connie Hunter, because I know you're a married lady. Oh, I'm sorry.
No hurry. It's okay. Whatever you want, Mr. Chair.
I'm Connie Hunter, and I live in South Curry County, and I'm very proud to be here today to talk to you about things of the heart for me as an advocate. First of all, a little while ago, the Vietnam Memorial that is being built at the Capitol, is there a way that my family, or one of the foundations that I work with, who came together and created, were created because my nephew was killed in Iraq? We support these kinds of things with funding sometimes, and I'd like to know if we can contribute to that, to the county, to give to the Vietnam War Memorial. Maybe email me, or let me know how I can do that, and how I can get a check delivered. And if there was a commitment of an amount, and there's a shortfall to that commitment, if you could let me know what that is, that would be great, and I'll try and get that, fill, that gap filled. And the second thing is, I've got to talk a little bit about Commissioner Sue Gold, and I'm a little bit shaken up, quite frankly, for some of the impulsivity in some recent decisions. Two of them rise right to the top, including releasing sensitive information concerning poor administration of southwestern Oregon Community College, Curry campus, putting people's jobs in jeopardy, and releasing things directly to that dean. That was meant to be a whistleblower-type situation. A lot of people's jobs are in jeopardy, and I don't like that. Frankly appreciate that. Writing a letter to the governor is a second thing regarding a hospital in Brookings. On Curry County Board of Commissioners letterheads, that is a novice mistake. You know, I will have a lot of forgiveness for Sue in some ways, because she didn't attend Commissioners College, but I would have hoped she had, and those kinds of things maybe wouldn't be slipping by. I find those choices disruptive of the people's business, and because it gives the false impression at the highest levels of the state, state government, that Curry County's Board of Commissioners, left hand, doesn't know what the right hand is doing beyond the, beyond that, this compromises the good work and reputations of the citizens who look to this governing board for sound judgment and legitimacy. The letter to the governor was an illegitimate attempt, in my opinion, to sway the opinions of the state of Oregon. As individual commissioners, you do not have that power, but as a board, you have authority. Commissioner Gold has chosen to circumvent this legal process in order to persuade the state of a personal agenda, which is still too tightly aligned with right-wing extremism, in my opinion, for sound governance. I register my disappointment today as a private citizen. Please, Commissioner Gold, use wisdom and sound methods instead of continuing such impulsive and detrimental rogue actions. Some actions outside of the sanctions of the position of a county commissioner to best serve the people of Curry County as part of a decision-making board. If you want to be a rogue cowgirl, become an advocate like me. Don't mix county business with personal agenda, please. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of your hard work, and this was not to single Commissioner Gold out, but to highlight those two things that I think are choices that we have to do better at the next time around. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, this is a good time. Mrs. Hunter, thank you very much. All your work with veterans, and the reminder of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund, thanks to some people in this room, we've raised $1,000 without even really putting a good effort. So, that opens the door again. It's been a month since we raised that $1,000, so hopefully that's just a start. I'll make sure you get the information, and it is going to go right next to the World War II Capitol West Yard display and memorial, and it is, I just think of your, your family, and the people that you represent, and the sacrifices you've made, and that goes for other people in this room. Officer Down Memorial, we're at 27. It's a low number compared to the 2018 period, but of course, it's, it just stops our heart. We just lost three about 24 hours ago. And you had mentioned, just in passing this morning, that we lost a couple more in Afghanistan. So the total military deaths that we have in the United States for the year of 2019 is now six. So we're hoping those numbers freeze right there indefinitely.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all.
David Barnes?
Good morning, David Barnes. One thing, just before I start, with Mr. Byerlin, perhaps something you want to consider is if we get a settlement from the Army Corps of Engineers, that you give him a percentage of it, a half a percent, a whole percent of any settlement we get. Just wanted to throw that out there at the beginning. One thing I want to talk to you about this morning, I guess, is fire. I've been kind of loosely following what's been happening over in Jackson and Josephine, and they had a meeting over there at the end of January. Representative Pam Marsh put together a big thing, had a lot of people come togeth, a lot of people come together. And what came out of that was Governor Brown appointing a, a Southern Oregon Fire Task Force or Commissioner, whatever it was. They were impaneled back in February. They had a reading list that they were sent and expected to know before the first meeting. The first meeting happened a couple of weeks ago, and out of that meeting came the Oregon Forest Fire and Resilience Investment Package. It's $6 million that they have put forth to the legislature up in Salem for four, to look at four basic problems. It invests money in initial attack resources to keep fire lines small. It provides some additional funding and staffing for Oregon Department of Forestry to implement fire protection and preparedness. Funds and implements community resiliency and smoke impact mitigation grants. And finally, it funds a landscape analysis of wildfire and develops mitigation strategies to help strategically target investments. I called Representative Marsh's office the other day to find out if Curry County was earmarked for any of the $6 million that they're looking for, and I don't believe that we are. We weren't invited to the table. We, we don't have a representative on the commission. We're not considered for the, for any of this money. And I just, you know, Representative Marsh's office has put out a call for people to stand up and to support this, and to get this. Our representative, as far as I know, has been silent on this, Mr. Smith. I don't know that he has said anything on this. I don't know whether he's attempted to get any of this $6 million that's earmarked for Curry County. I read through this, there's almost, I think about 20 new positions that they're looking to hire. I don't think any of them are planning on being staffed out of Curry County's forestry office. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, we, I understand your recent push towards regional, regionality, and get, going over to Jackson, and going to Josephine, and having those people come over here, but it seems that we're like the little brother who's really asking to go out with big brother on a Saturday night, you know? And we're forgotten. And that, that's really a shame. I would like to give you a copy of this, the investment package that I got, and, you know, a couple of months ago, we were talking about resolutions condemning the Forest Service for their actions. I'd really like to see us get on board with this, and promote this, and support Representative Marsh in this effort, because just ancillary, we will get benefit from it. Already, the website that they have out there, I can go and I can type my address into the website, and it will show me the fire danger around my house. You know, things like this need to be promoted within the county. You know, we have our, our wildfire protection plan that sat on a shelf for 11 years, the Chetco Bar Recovery Mitigation Plan that nobody has acted on. April's next week, you know, with fire season. This is what I was told is called the shoulder season, where you get fuel reduction work done, where you get roads re-cleared, you know? And as far as, from what I know, we're not really doing anything yet. So, I know, I know you have somebody coming in at a workshop this afternoon to talk, but the public isn't allowed to speak at workshops, so I wanted to bring it up now, and, you know, ask you to support this plan, and, you know, get behind it. It's things that are doable, you know? I, I understand, you know, I don't disagree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Boyce's ideas about horses, and wolves, and cougars, but those are things that are down the road, you know? Those are very esoteric, and they're a long time down the road, or require a lot of permitting and other talking. So, you know, these are things that we can get started on today.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'd like to give you a copy of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Quickly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Excellent report, Mr. Barnes. In addition to that $6 million, in, oh, late August, the governor there was, excuse me, late September, I'm sorry, was at Jackson County, and announced a one and a half million Rogue Forest Restoration Partnership. So that's in addition to the $6 million.
Okay.
And so I've been lobbying with everything I've got. Jackson County's the fourth-largest city in Oregon, maybe the fifth, whatever. That's where votes are. I hate to put it in that context, but it has been incredibly frustrating, to your points, where we stand as a county of 23,000 people, with the two, if you take the city of Brookings, no community in Oregon in the last 10 years has been hit harder than Brookings in all, if you just use the natural disasters. And so, yeah, I'm going to keep pushing for, where is our portion, that one and a half million? I think Representative Marsh, also to your point, has done a good job, but no, we were not invited, and that's why, to the extent, the last two years, I've had to fight to be able to get to Salem, to be able to get to Medford, to travel, the abuse I've taken, and it's, it's, but we can start today, and you and I've had these discussions, start today, move forward, and do all we can to catch up, and prevail, and affect change. Thank you again.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barnes, I also want to say, you mentioned, you know, us joining with Joe Cow and Jackson, and I'm joining with us. I think it's important, because we are rural Oregon down here, that we, I'm looking to hopefully form some sort of a coalition, so that when we go to Salem, we have a larger voice. We are now costing someone votes. We can cost someone their seat in the House Legislative, or however, as a state senator. So, you know, that's my interest in that. And at Jackson County the other day, when I went there with Mr. Byerlin, we spoke to the Commissioners, and he was showing me some of the things that they were working on with the fires. And I asked him, what's in that for Curry County? And he said, well, we have, we have yet to get that far. So, I think there is some interest in all of us working together, at least that's my hope, and I think with some of the work that Commissioner Boyce is doing on this, and the relationships that he's made, hopefully we can move this forward a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You know, like you said, my point is just that, you know, I, I'm all for the regionality, but, you know, it's, it's not, we shouldn't be treated as the baby brother when the time happens.
Trust me, I got a, I got a big voice, so...
Full seat at the table. I want to sit at the big people's table this holiday season, so...
Thank you, sir. All right, so, let me see. Can I get a, for a number, oh wait, we, no presentations. Number five, Consent Agenda. May I get a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I get a second?
Hang on one moment. Yeah, I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll call role. Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so moving on to Action Item Six, Elected Officials' Travel Policy. Mr. Barnes?
David Barnes again. I've read over the new travel policy that you put out, and I like it for the most part. There's one, one portion of it, though, when you, when you get to the end and you're talking about per diems. It says that all requests for per diems have to be put in within 30 days of the end of the fiscal year. The top, it actually states that in order to, for the better, better understand the actual expenses incurred in fiscal year, all requests for reimbursement for travel, meals, lodging, et cetera, shall be made within 30 days of the close of the fiscal year. I don't know, as an auditor, I don't know how you can gauge your travel throughout the year, if you're allowed to maintain your receipts and submit them just 30 days before the end of the fiscal year. In Section D, I believe it is...
That's where this was.
Okay. Right, okay, no, the beginning of Section E, it's called Budget Limitations. I'd like to suggest that you add a line, number one, to that. And that being, all expenses and per diem requests shall be submitted by the seventh day of the month following the month in which the expenses were incurred, i.e. January's expenses should be submitted by February 7th. No expenses or per diems will be reimbursed if submitted at more than 60 days after the date that they were incurred. This is really the only way to gauge your, your policy throughout the year, to gauge your budget throughout the year. I've done budget, I've done travel, travel expense reports before by the hundreds when I was working. You know, it, it's only becomes a problem if you let them bu, build up. You know, if you sit down, every month, it'll take, none of you traveled that much, that it's that extensive, you know? It could be done in five minutes every month and submitted. That's the only real way to gauge and to, to watch your budget throughout the year. So, you know, I'd like to ask that you include that, you know, rather than allowing it to build up, I would like to ask you to include that. I have the wording here that I put, I will give to Ms. Melzer.
I feel like I'm giving that to Ms. Melzer. And I will say also, I reviewed this again the other day, and I was going to actually ask that the, the wording of close of the fiscal year, it just say that meals, lodging, travel should be made within 30 days of returning from whatever you are doing. So, very similar language, but yeah, I agree with that, that we can, we can change the language on that.
So you have my support on exactly what you both just communicated. I want to dig a little deeper, though, and that is the per diem on the meals, and I've expressed this in the past, that you, you send out a note to the, let's just say, the guy that's packing a lunchbox at South Coast Lumber, that the county employees need $42 a day when they're traveling. I think that sends a wrong message. Maybe I'm wrong on that. If you can't eat on $20 a day, this is a poor county. I think we need to lead by example, and I may not get a lot of support... And I may not get a lot of support on that, but I, I think that, again, sends the wrong note to the citizens on what our priorities are. Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I'm gonna have to agree with Commissioner Boyce on that. Um, I've actually talked to people a number of times on this issue. I think everything should be handled with a receipt. And also, another concern that I have, is there a, a form that people are gonna have to turn in for their travel reimbursement?
Yes, there is, I believe there is already.
As long as there's, yeah, as long as there's a specific form. I think that's important, that all travel is, to be reimbursed, has to be on that form along with receipts.
On that, uh, on the, uh, per diem for the meals, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with that somewhat as well because if we weren't traveling, we would have to eat anyway. This is something that you would have to do anyway. So, I can understand the, you know, the, uh, a cost difference of eating out versus having to go to the store, buy it and prepare it. And yeah, there might be a $20 difference per day that way. So, to have a $25, 20 or $25 a day per diem versus a 42, because if you were home, you would have to eat anyway and pay the grocery bill, um, makes sense to me. So, Commissioner Gold?
I do know the school district down in Brookings has a per diem of $30 a day, so.
Well, how about we meet in the middle and we say 25?
That would be fine with me.
I'm okay with that.
All right. So, can we change that language as well?
Um, we can, um, keep in mind that the policy affects the other elected officials as well.
Right.
Good.
So, you may want to run that past them before you actually do a final approval on it. So, I can make the changes as a draft and bring it back if you'd like.
I see our sheriff just stepped up, so I'm guessing he wants to make some comments.
Well, it wasn't that long ago that they raised the per diem rate for, um, employees. And I'm not sure if you're talking about just elected officials or entire policy for a, a per diem for employees.
It says commissioner and elected officials.
That's just it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, the, my people that I send off to training or whatever, you can't buy a breakfast for less than 10 bucks out there. And you can't buy lunch without, you know, without 15 bucks. You can't buy dinner for less than 20 bucks. It's just, you know, it just doesn't work, so.
And I can understand that, but I guess my point is they, you, if, they would have to eat if they were home.
Yeah, but they're, they're home, but you're sending them or making them go to a place, so, um, it's different when you, you can make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich at home than having to buy, uh, a Reuben sandwich, say, for instance, lunch. It's, it's a hell of a more expensive to eat out. But I, I was just my two cents. Uh, I know we, the, the rate was lower, the board came and increased that rate because of the, I think it was an average of others that they compared against too as well.
Yeah, I believe the state average is $56 a day, somewhere.
And they're headed for millions of dollars in deficit spending too. So, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, there's a notion that, uh, county employees, this is the public perception, they need to eat, go to three different restaurants in one day. I just don't agree with that. I, you know, I want to get them every dollar I can and, and pay compensation, but, um, you know, if they're gonna stay at 42, I at least want the commissioners and elected officials to lead by example. So, I'm ready to vote today. Oh, if there's hard feelings, that's, so be it.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so, the number is what then for?
25.
25 for?
If there's agreement here.
And changing the language, um, on the, uh, it was?
30 days.
DG? Uh, um, yeah, wait a second, how could that be DG? D, yeah, meal per diem, which is D on the travel policy and then, um, paragraph G, to better understand the actual expenses incurred in the fiscal year, uh, to change that to a 30-day close, um, on all receipts being submitted, um, that you would have 30 days from the time that you return from the travel that you're on to submit those, um, those receipts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, travel policy with the changes that were just mentioned.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll call role, Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Day Wireless Tower Project, Discussion and Decision, Sheriff Ward.
We're here again to, the, this is Sheriff Ward, I'm sorry, uh, to discuss the tower issue, not so much the tower, but the microwave, um, back hall that we've asked to have a engineering port and a study and everything done because of the failures that we've experienced with our microwave system, which is beyond life, doesn't, it's not supported, can't get parts for. And so, uh, just to recap, you guys made a county emergency for communications problem, uh, issue, and that's when Day Wireless stepped in and, and gave us a quote for what it would take to make a ring, to make sure that we have, uh, replaced the, the aging system that we have now. So, that's, the decision's now up to you guys to, to discuss.
And I would firstly like to say that the comments made in the newspaper by, uh, by the writer, I think were inaccurate. I was not trying to hold this up and kick the can down the road any farther. I just wanted to make sure that I was doing all I could to, uh, make sure the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed and if we could find a, uh, find a, uh, discount in this, as another commissioner had spoken to me about, um, I just wanted to investigate that, so.
If I could make a comment on that?
Go ahead.
What was said wasn't what I said.
And I appreciate that, Sheriff.
Sorry to bust out laughing.
It did seem that way. Um, anyway.
I, I support everything that you guys have done so far. Uh, you guys took the bull by the horn when you made this an emergency situation. Uh, your comments about, you know, we can't have deputies and first responders out there without communications and you're going to fix this and, and I su, I support that. I supported your decision. If you needed a few more extra days, I didn't have a problem with that. Um, 'cause if you've got questions, you gotta get them answered and I understand that.
So, as, as I've said publicly, and I think this, this whole board has reiterated, that we will not see you, not have all the resources that we can give to you to not only protect yourself and your deputies, our fire departments, our, our, our fire and rescue, uh, but also the citizens of this county. So, um, it would be my recommendation that we move forward with this, um, and I would make that motion. I would like to move forward with it though on the four-year extended warranty plan. Um, we have already spoken with our road department. Um, the governor has authorized money from the road department for this exact thing. Um, so I think we're in full compliance. I think some of the things we still need to work out is when, uh, you know, when partial payments or however they're going to get paid, um, so that our, our, our county accountant is fully up to speed and can get thing, get out in front of, you know, writing checks and getting this planned out. I think that's the only bump that we still have, that we may have a question for Day Wireless. And I would encourage our county accountant, uh, to maybe work with your office, uh, and Day Wireless to coordinate that. But it would be my motion to approve the Day Wireless, change out, uh, as, everything as they've requested on here, uh, with the warranty plan, uh, from our road fund.
Is it still, could you have questions or do you need a second now?
No, if you'd like to talk more about it now.
I, I, I would. I'm absolutely ready to support this today, but I do, and you've covered, uh, very good there. You've mentioned the road fund reserves, uh, the support we've had from Roadmaster Christensen, I think has been really good. I mean, he is like Robbins before him and Crumley before Robbins. They have fiercely tried to guard those funds. Just a, a side note, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I want the public to understand, uh, how difficult a position we would be in right now if we didn't have those road fund reserves. I don't know what an HE double hockey stick we would be, we would be doing. So, I'm very thankful that, that that money is there, uh, but it leads to what we have got to do as a board and frankly, you know where I stand on the lack of effort the last two years to try and find additional resources. Uh, it's not too late and we can, but there is tremendous responsibility and pressure on us to figure some way. You cannot run a county strictly on property taxes. No one can do it in United States of America, especially Oregon. Um, the only other thing I had, Mr. Chair, uh, and you referenced this, uh, thank you, on the pay, how this might be segmented or what, I didn't, if it's in the documents here, I missed it. Um, so, I, we don't need to discuss that today, but I'm just hoping there's some opportunities, Sheriff, um, and Captain McDonald, that we will have maybe over an extended period of time or something. Uh, also, I noticed that we have, uh, in the map here, Cape Blanco, Agnes, Courthouse, Grizzly, Bosley, Black Mountain, Brookings. So, there's actually seven different locations that they are maintaining. Uh, that finally sunk in with me. And also, you referenced, which I appreciate, the extended warranty and I, that, that clears that up for me. That's all I have on this, thank you.
And from this, I would also like to look to, uh, you know, anything additional that we may put on these towers and all those fees that we direct them to, you know, a, a maintenance fund for these towers. So that, so that, you know, we, we are planning for the future, um, in four years, when these warranties wear out, that we have some funding to do more work on these. And, uh, and I'd also like to look at the rates of what we currently charge, um, for any space we have on these towers, make sure that it's, uh, it's, it's at national averages so that we're not being usury, but I want to make sure that we're being fair. Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I don't know whether that was part of your motion. I totally agree with getting the deferred maintenance in there, charging people, but I also want to make sure that I understand this is a loan from the road fund. Is that correct?
Was it? Oh, I thought county council raised his hand there.
Miss Tomy, girl, I'm sorry.
I personally, I personally, I can't see how this is going, how, how can the county pay, pay this back? At, at the state we're in right now, I, I don't see us, um, being a, I, I can't promise the road department that we're going to pay something back that we don't have resources for. If we get resources, let's say that Mr. Bylin gets us $20 million from this Rogue, Rogue River thing, or where we get some additional, uh, funding for this county, as I am and I hope this entire board is working diligently to do, um, to offer it back to the road fund, I would love to do that. But to promise the road fund through a loan that I'm going to be able to pay them back without having, uh, I just, I can't buy a house if I know I can't pay for it, so. I can't agree with that. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, uh, Director Schmelzer brought that up last week and I, I'm glad also that you, that you mentioned that. Uh, part of our strategic plan, uh, our absolute goal, one of our main goals should be, and I've, and I've talked to the public about going back as much as five years to repay some of the loans, uh, when, you know, maybe interest-free, hopefully, uh, but this is, this is a huge, as you stated, a huge chunk of money that's coming out of that fund and we, it's through our plan, get the goal set to repay it. And I hope it's possible and I believe if we get our heads together, it will be possible. Thank you.
And if we go by the governor's language in her letter, um, it's pretty clear that she wants us to do this and use the road fund. So, um, again, I, I just, I cannot see us promising to pay this road fund back when we don't, we don't have a, a way to do that at this point. So, what I would like to do is make a motion that we, that we approved Day Wireless's bid to do this with the warranty and also direct Ms. Schmelzer to look forward, um, for equipment on these towers, um, if we can, um, rent some of the space or, or whatever on these towers, um, that we can do that and make sure that the pricing that we have on that is apropos for what the services are.
Sure. I do know Day Wireless right now maintains the leases and they track that for us, but I'll dig into a little deeper on that and bring that back.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Just to, just to reiterate, the road fund, uh, the road department radios rely on that just as much as we do.
Yeah. If we, we don't have towers.
We're in the middle of a motion right now, so, sorry about that. Um, do I have a second?
I seconded, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, any further discussion? All right, I'll do the role, Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
I vote aye. You have radios, sir. Our county's protected.
So.
I would like to, uh, before you leave, Sheriff.
Deadline.
I would like to also ask your office to please with Day Wireless, coordinate with Ms. Colstrom, perhaps call a meeting with the, you know, with, with someone from your office and someone from Day Wireless at, at a minimum of a phone conference with her so that she has direction and timelines on, on how this is going to get done.
And I, and I think county council should be probably involved in that as well.
No, he's okay. Ms. Colstrom?
I'll make sure that happens, sir.
Thank you.
Louise Colstrom, county accountant. I, I, I'm a little apprehensive about using 100% coverage, uh, using those road improvement funds, just using them. My understanding is that, um, the, the towers themselves are not 100% road and, um, sheriff. All those, the, both of those qualify for using the road funds. The percentage of the towers that is not those two cannot be used to provide those, those funds for. So, if 100% of the towers use is, um, of 90% is the sheriff and the road using and then 10% is, is not avail, you can't use road funds for that 10%.
Well, I think in this case, it's not the towers themselves. What we're providing the funding for is the equipment going on the towers. It's not who owns the towers. It's the equipment that's going on those towers and that is to be dedicated to fire, rescue, the road department, all those resources, and they are road department. And do I, can I get a legal opinion on that from council?
We have an emergency, if I may. And the, the governor's, uh, we might be cellmate, I don't know.
So, again, we want to use road funds to put in a microwave communication that will serve the road department's needs.
On the towers, yes.
Okay. And the governor has written a letter saying that this is an okay use of the road funds under the statutes.
Yes.
Okay. So, again, and then by also, my understanding is that the users who are not our road department, who are paying us to be on there is gonna pay us money and we'll use that money to replenish the road fund as much as we can.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, I think we have, um, a plan to replenish the portion that the county accountant is identifying as perhaps not road funds. And as the sheriff has explained, the road department uses these microwaves for their communications, so, um, it, it looks like there's a defensible argument that this is a good legal use of the road funds, whether it's a loan or just an expense.
I just, I just wanted to make absolutely 100% positively sure because I'm the one that's writing the check and I'm the one that's responsible for those road funds, so.
And I understand. Um, but you are also, and I, and I'm, I'm not meaning this in the wrong way, but you're being directed by a board to do that, so that's, that's your responsibility under the board's direction, so you have no liability on that. Commissioner Gold?
I just want to make one, I don't think that's true, point here. In that motion, I don't know whether it was clear that all of those funds that are brought in from outside entities will be put back into the road fund. I, I didn't get that out of the motion.
I, I got that to go to the towers maintenance.
Yes.
That's what I got.
And that's not the road fund.
And that's the motion, that, that was what we.
Have tower maintenance written.
Yes.
Meanwhile, do we need to have a discussion at some point, what, uh, uh, our authority is as a board versus, uh, county, uh, finance director? Because there seems to be some, uh, concern.
I think everything's clear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I, I just want to clarify, so at next week's meeting then, we'll have an order just verifying, um, what was decided and the findings. Um, there has to be a legal notice in the paper.
Yes.
Council, if you have anything to add to that, I'm, just want to make sure everybody realizes, don't be surprised when you see it on next week's agenda.
Right, what Director Schmelzer's talking about and it came through the conversation with Day Wireless, when we talked about negotiating prices and they said, well, you're, you're bound by the prices in the Worthington County contract and that's because we're piggybacking. And when you piggyback, you have to put a notice that you're piggybacking and that's what we're, after the decision was made to go with that, we then have to do the notice and that will be up, uh, next week or, yeah, and so that'll come back in the consent agenda. and that will be up next week, or, yeah, and so that'll come back in the consent agenda just to approve this. And that's, that's about it.
Sheriff, just so you know, and I don't, I just want to make clear that your office understands that we do have to notice this for one, one notice in the newspapers?
Yeah, I understand that.
So, that this, it'll be back on the agenda for signature next week, but it is a board approved as of now. We just do need to notify everyone in the county that it's happened.
And in the meantime, again, the captain will get ahold of Day Wireless and county accountant and try to work out all the details.
Yep, perfect. Great coordination, and this is going to be imperative, because we need it in before the rain, so.
You just answered that, thank you.
Done. All right. Next up, we have 6C, scheduled SASO Second Amendment Workshop. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, the board had, at one point, indicated they would schedule a workshop in the future to meet with the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance people. Commissioner Boyce had wanted that to be an evening workshop, but we don't have evening workshop scheduled, so he asked that it be put on the agenda for discussion. In the meantime, it's my understanding that one of the people who wanted this on the agenda has passed away.
Yes.
So, I think the board should decide whether they just postpone this indefinitely, schedule an evening workshop, or which direction they want to take.
Well, I'm not, I would imagine they still want to move forward with this. I would like to hear from them if they, if they want to move this any farther forward.
Yes, they do. But no urgency on a date. I'm thinking, Mr. Chair, possibly not before May 1st.
Okay. Well, why don't you coordinate that with them, and then bring back, bring it back to us, so we can go forward. Commissioner Gold?
I don't know whether either of you read the legal brief that was given by sheriff and a retired attorney, came up with this, but I have some concerns about this issue as a whole, simply because we have all made an oath to uphold not only the Oregon Constitution, but the US Constitution, and a lot of stuff in there is just totally against it. So, I have a problem with it in general.
And I agree with you. I have some issues with the language in this, as we already have something very similar to this in place. What I am is, I would like to facilitate, if, if it has to happen, I know, I just want to facilitate the conversation, and perhaps our sheriff's department, and we can have some legal counsel there to reiterate the laws on this. And, you know, conversation, I believe, is always good. To move this forward, I don't think it's this board's job to move something like this forward. I think if they wanted a ballot measure on this, that they can bring a ballot measure on it. It's very easy to do.
Well, they could get a petition out there and do a referendum.
But at least to have a conversation, if they want to have a conversation about it, I'm a, I'm a 100% Second Amendment, I am 100% protecting this nation against anyone that wants to tear down our walls. So...
I don't have a problem with that. That's, that's no, no problem with me, and as far as the conversation, that's fine, but just to let you know where I am as far as reading the legal, I don't want to put the county in a liable, in a position where we would be held liable for something like this.
And I think also the sheriff's department, along with David Brock Smith, put something very similar to this in, and passed it during Mr. Smith's tenure as a commissioner, so. We'll rely on you, sir, to bring, Commissioner Boyce, to bring this back with a, you know, bring back to the board with a date that you'd like to see this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just mentioned keeping the conversation going. These are good people, and they're concerned, they just want to be heard. I think that we're probably, I'm guessing, in agreement that there would have to be some likely significant amendments to what they proposed, and that's the idea, is get both sides here. Thank you.
Thanks. Directors' report. Ms. Schmelzer?
I just want to give you an update on the building official position. We did receive one application. Person who applied does not have the Oregon certifications, but it is an application that I'm looking closely at. I also have an appointment over in Josephine Coney on Saturday to talk about a possible MOU with Josephine Coney on services for the building official position. I have asked Finance to work on a credit card policy, because we do not have a policy in place, so Finance indicated, when they're done with the budget, that they would begin working on that. So, I'm looking maybe at the end of May, June, before we see a credit card policy. We did have a managers' meeting yesterday, and the managers did decide to go down to one meeting a month versus two. So, that's what we have.
All right. Commissioner updates? Commissioner Boyce?
This is something that Connie Hunter brought, actually a week ago, and I've been keeping copies to pass around to everybody here.
I have a copy of that.
You do? I knew you did. This is a news release on suicide prevention and the options for Curry County citizens. So, I need a few minutes, Mr. Chair. I'll try not to go too long here. The credit card policy that you just mentioned, that's music to my ears, great to hear, good job. I want to read something from Southern Oregon Workers Investment Board, I'll abbreviate here, but it's Nurse Clinical Faculty Award. So, one of our students at South Western Marine Community College is going to get a award, and the emphasis here is the nurse shortage in Oregon, and it goes back to what Economic Development Coordinator Madison has been working on with Curry Health Provider Recruitment, and we're making a little progress there. So, I'll just read the first paragraph. Award presentation for Judith. SOIB has been awarding 25,000 in competitive fellowships to nursing faculty in Coos and Curry Counties in an effort to attract more qualified nurses to become nursing faculty. We are facing a critical shortage of nurses, not only in our area, but in the entire state. We have the jobs and students, but the community colleges have been unable to find enough qualified staff to expand class size. SOIB's nurse faculty expansion program looks to close the wage gap between working as a nurse and teaching a nurse facility. About a $20,000 difference there, so you can understand why it's a little tough to find the professors. So, skipping a paragraph here, they're, they're right now have the capacity to do onsite, five nurses a year, and we hope to, within 18 months, be able to perhaps go to 10 nurses per year, trained in, in, trained in Curry County, and hopefully, we can keep them in Curry County. We mentioned the strategic plan, maybe a little discussion here, that's up to you, Mr. Chair. We, we're into our, the end of our third month here, and I was talking to a friend the other day, says, "Hey, that's going to take a year." That may be true, but my concern is, we don't have a year. And so, I don't know how the board, and I'm not trying to pin anybody down today, but how the board might want to move on that. It's been discussed in the past. Go ahead, yes, please.
Well, we've already discussed this, and Ms. Schmelzer is looking for grant funding for someone to do our, our strategic plan. I think once we find that, it's just a matter of several months to get it done. I don't think it's going to take a year.
I told my wife, one of the things on my list was opening bear camp. She laughed at that. Don't you laugh? For access from the valley. So, good, thank you on that. And I just want to keep the pressure going a little bit there, and I would encourage the board individually, maybe collectively, to have a list of what we think should be included in that plan, and how we can hopefully contribute. I've got several notes here, but I think the Vietnam Memorial Fund come up today. I don't know if I have, maybe I can conclude, actually, with this. Mr. Chair, working with Director Schmelzer, and Parks Director, Rob, excuse, it's hard to say, Robinson, that's the workshop, Hopkins, I'm sorry. And let's see if it's on here. I don't think it is. It has to do with an adult shop in Brookings, and I've had several...
It's right there.
You see it?
The PD...
Two down. Right there.
Yep.
Oh, there we go. Charles, thank you. I'm sorry, I was looking right at it. So, I have several, we have several concerned citizens down there. I'm, I'm processing this, and, you know, when you look at the culture of our country, where it's going, and what this could mean, it's, it's a fascinating time, let me look at this, if I can get to the second one. I'm not going to read this, but if the public wants to read what that says there, it's just appalling to me. And I don't know if I want to, I haven't done a sit-in since I was a junior in high school, you know? But I'm, I'm looking, this is one of the main, this is 101 in Hoffelt Lane, and the Spot Restaurant. I really like it there.
Oh, my gosh.
And so, but I won't be eating there again if they, if they are allowing that sign to be put up or displayed where kids can see. And as a rural county, as a responsible board, I'm, we can push back on this. That's the only three pictures I have, Mr. Chair. I don't have a plan right now that I want to recommend to the board, but I'm working with citizens, but...
Question.
Yes, certainly.
Did they apply for licensing here in the county?
Well, that's what we need to know, and we, we need to research this.
And I would imagine their license would have had to have been explicit on what they were going to be doing there, and that, that's something that we should have looked at.
Well, we don't have business licenses, but I would have to check with our planning director to see if they had a permit, or were required to have a permit.
So, can we direct... Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to sound real stupid here to everyone. We don't have business licenses.
Not outside the...
I had, I had a business in the county, I had to pay a licensing fee for it.
You were a good citizen, are.
Probably paid the state licensing fee.
Well, we need to, let's get that on the agenda.
Would that be before directing staff, just to research this with County Counsel?
Oh, I think we absolutely need to research this. This, this is an ISO, in my opinion, for our county.
Thank you. I thought that might be your response.
So, basically, any business can just pop up without a license here in Curry County?
That's what we need to know.
At least in the unincorporated areas.
Well, what they would need is permits. So, I'm going to check with our planning director to see, was a permit required for this? Was one issued? It could be that it's a violation, I don't know.
There we go.
So, I'll research that.
And I'd like to expedite that research. I'd like that to be moved to the front of the list, because this is, this is appalling to me.
Do cities require business licenses? Just curious.
Yes, they do. Absolutely. I pay a business license for my business here, staying in the city.
The Coney did research having business licenses at one point, and I'm not sure, Counsel, if you remember what happened with that, it was right about the time I left, so I'm not sure where those conversations went.
Just the Board of Commissioners opted not to have a business license?
I'd like to get that looked into as well, and move this into the agenda if we, if we can, because I think that this is part of our duty to protect our kids from this kind of stuff. And you know what? We're all, we're all adults, and this is part of our life now, but, and we can only protect our kids so much, but the amount of people that might not eat at that restaurant because there's a great big sign sitting on the side of the road that says "Adult Shop", if they incorporate that as maybe part of that restaurant's business, that will cost that restaurant revenue. So, that's punitive against that restaurant, in my opinion, and I would like to look at this as expedite, looking into this.
Mr. Chair?
Thanks for bringing that up, by the way.
You're welcome. Thanks to the people that brought it to my attention, as I, yeah, yeah, it stops your heart, and our number one job is to protect the public, and it starts with the kids, and so, I just don't want this in my county. If that's brash, I don't care. If it offend somebody, I don't care if they've got...
Read the sign.
Yeah. So, I think our second or third meeting that I had, 2017, we had a young lady here that I'm going to guess was probably in her late twenties, early thirties, that was, had the courage to come here and offer public testimony, and she was even shaking a little bit. I don't know if, because she was nervous, but she begged us to, excuse me, let me rephrase that, she really challenged us to understand what was going on in Harbor, and I won't reference, because I don't have it absolutely correct, but her, her comments were unbelievably powerful, and I'm going to even ask the board to ask staff to go back and recoup that. I don't know who, I don't, I don't recall her name now, but I would, I'd like to know more, who that person is, and how we can help, and how it might be related to this. You look at sex trafficking, it's rampant over the border and in this country, this is where it starts. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to, that's all I have today.
Commissioner Gold?
I am going to be doing a rebuttal to the comments of Dr. Williams at the last meeting. I was shocked at the personal attack directed at me by Dr. Williams at the BOC meeting on 3/20/19. I carefully reviewed all of the statements that were made by Dr. Williams and my fellow commissioners, and found that there were too many inaccuracies, purposeful and uninformed statements, and blatant misrepresentations to enumerate. I will only be addressing those statements that I felt were most egregious. One, the letterhead I used and sent to the letter to the governor on 3/11/19 was brought up as a big issue. The top of the letterhead says "Curry County Commissioners," and I am part of that board. Neither Commissioner Pach's name nor Commissioner Boyce's names are mentioned in that letter. My name was the only name that was on that letter. All statements in that letter can be documented for their veracity. Dr. Williams stated that by recommending an ER be delayed, she, meaning Sue Gold, is harming 93% of patients. I definitely question those statistics and would like documentation that would substantiate this accusation. The issue of a hospital in Brookings has been ongoing long before Commissioner Pach moved here, and before Commissioner Boyce returned from his business and political efforts in the Valley. In 2015, the issue of a standalone emergency room, ER, was brought to the forefront after tens of thousands of taxpayer funds were spent on lobbyists, attorneys, travel, and meetings, in order to implement an administrative rule to change our state regulations. Despite this, just as South Curry was promised a hospital by the then-CEO of Curry Health District, it was promised an ER even without annexation to the district. That was almost four years ago. So, what possibly could be the urgency now? In my opinion, the answer to that question is money. The chair of the Curry Health District Board has been documented in a board meeting saying that "we don't want to serve them," referring to South Curry County, "we just want their money." This was witnessed by a number of South Curry residents, as well as reported in the pilot, and this statement has never been retracted. This individual is still their board chair. Three, Dr. Williams indicated that when Huskanagan went out, that hurt everyone significantly, and that's not a common occurrence. It should be noted that Huskanagan is not the only barrier to accessing Gold Beach Hospital. Multiple independent studies verify the ongoing vulnerability of earthquakes, floods, tsunamis, landslides, wildfires, and unreinforced bridges throughout our county. Even if the new hospital survives a major disaster tsunami, our citizens in the north and south will not be able to get there. Four, Dr. Williams indicated that Gold, that's me, is involved with a group that is very counterproductive, divisive, and trying to continue with splitting the county. I am proud to be part of a group of people from South Curry County that is advocating for the best possible health care. We have spent many long hours studying this issue and have found that it's possible for a critical access satellite hospital in Brookings, and that CMS, that's Medicare, frowns on standalone emergency rooms because there are significant increases in costs and patient risks. Brookings is the largest city in Oregon without a hospital. Why should the people of South Curry, that's 2/3 of the population of Curry County, settle for less when they could have more? My position is that we advocate for the best possible health care for all of our county, and hold our governor and the Oregon Health Authority to their mission statement, which states, "Ensuring all people and communities can achieve optimum physical, mental, and social well-being through partnerships, prevention, and access to quality, affordable health care." Dr. Williams stated that, quote, "The hospital board writes the governor to get emergency funds, and Sue Gold writes them not to do it. In fact, my letter to the governor never asked the governor to withhold emergency funds. I have attached a copy of my letter to the governor in this packet for the record." Six, Dr. Williams stated that my letter is a straight shot, stated a straight shot to Sutter. I believe you are a Curry County Commissioner, not a Del Norte Commissioner. My letter to the governor was written on 3/11/19, and at this time, no ambulances could go to Curry General because of the road conditions from Brookings to Gold Beach. So, the only other option for ER patients was Sutter Coast, and it's definitely a straight shot from Brookings to Crescent City. I've traveled that road many, many times. In my opinion, this was one of the most offensive statements. Not only have I volunteered in elected positions over decades, more than the doctor and the fellow commissioners... more than the daughter and the fellow commissioners combined, but I wrote the letter to Sutter Coast when their ER providers were charging outrageous costs for out-of-network fees to Curry County residents, which Commissioner Boyce refused to sign. When Sutter Coast decided to get a new, to get new ER providers that had more reasonable charges, it was Del Norte Health District that extended thanks to our board for helping to effect a new contract with Sutter and their ER contractor. Seven, I said that I was advocating for a critical access satellite hospital, and Dr. Williams stated, "What you are advocating for is to stop a Brookings ER, and what you are advocating for may not be possible and may not be economically feasible, but it may delay the emergency room for the next year or two, and that should not happen." That's criminal. As stated above, the ER has been delayed for the last four years. Why is it now criminal to work together and come up with a better health care option for South Curry residents? A satellite critical access hospital that also includes an ER? The standalone ER that is currently being proposed does not even include observation beds. If Dr. Williams and my fellow commissioners truly wanted our county to come together, they could have been working with all of the citizens, and not just those who have potential financial gain. Eight, Commissioner Pash, Commissioner Boyce, and Dr. Williams indicated that a feasibility study was not needed. I strongly disagree with this. Why would CMS clearly indicate standalone emergency rooms are not preferred and they are not allowed in California and most of Oregon? CMS clearly has more experience and data than all three of these individuals. If there is to be an exception to this in Oregon, a feasibility study is needed to look at all possible ramifications. Everything I mention in this report is factual, and I would be glad to give supporting documentation to any of you if you have concerns. So I'm gonna make this part of the record, and I will give you a copy also.
So, Mr. Chair, you're not gonna, we're not up against a clock issue or something, are we, I hope?
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you. So I have some responses, and I have a couple other things that I overlooked, so it's up to you if you wanna go now, or you wanna allow me some?
You wanna reopen your comment?
Oh, I was afraid you were gonna characterize it that way. Uh, yes, sir. So, first of all, rewind. I made a statement last week, misquoted Mr. Barnes on a total amount of funds that were, that he was concerned we had spent, the board had spent, and I think, I thought I heard him say two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, well, in fact, he quoted two-hundred-and-twenty-five. So I apologize for that. I also have another one. I'd said about a month ago that Coos County has about twenty taxing districts. They have more than we do. So I apologize to the public for that bad information. Um, and to Mr. Barnes. Mr. Chair, you know, the, I just heard Commissioner Gold reference that, you know, why don't we work together? In the two years that, that I've been on this board and watched the, the conduct of this board, how they treated the sheriff, how they treated David Brock Smith, not Commissioner Gold, but the, the attitude prior, and the, the mocking me for going to county college, the list is gigantic, and I have it well recorded. So, any effort, I tried to meet Commissioner Gold in December of 2017, sixteen, I'm sorry, to see if we could come together. We had a meeting set up, she canceled, would not return my emails, and I, you know the rest of the story from there. I was never able to sit down with her, and I'm, and that's regrettable. So as we try and come together or get along, which is what the public requires, it's, when you have the wrong people in charge, well, that'd be me, you, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Huxley, whomever, when you have the wrong people in charge, there are consequences. And so the first thing I wanna say, that, back to Mr. Barnes's comments the other day, there is a notion out there, he didn't promote this, but there is a notion out there that we raised our pay. Okay? There's basically been no pay raises for commissioners in Curry County since 2010. Uh, 2014, there's a little bit of adjustment for retirement or something, I don't know what it was. We could research that if you need more information. The only one that got a pay raise in this board, two months ago, was Commissioner Gold. Okay? Mine was reinstated, yours was clarified. She voted for her pay raise. Uh, after the first two years telling the citizens that she would be working full-time for ten thousand, well, we know that's not even remotely close to true. So what I would like, not to bog this meeting down too much today, I'd like to have a workshop for all three of us sit down with the public and simply defend our records, offer what our vision is for the future, outlook. You know, I think that, that that could have a lot of benefit to the public. I think a response will go before the public and outline some of those things. I'm just gonna highlight here, there's about a half million dollars that went out the door. And I think it's, I, I think it's very easy to follow. I think it would suggest an audit is, is appropriate. We got hammered, you and I, pretty hard on a KCIW interview not too long ago, it was most dysfunctional board that Commissioner Gold has ever sat on. And I was also locked in that program. But just scrolling down here, um, shows who's getting what in this county, who's getting paid, the county council, the sheriff, and I have no complaints with any of these figures, except maybe the clerk and the assessor both have been here for thirty years, and they're paid less than I am. I don't know if that, that doesn't square, you know? When it comes to commissioners' raises, the compensation board recommended, thank you for the time, by the way, Mr. Chair, but they recommended seventy-one thousand, five thousand more than what we're getting. I've been happy at sixty-six, that's the agreement I made with the citizens in the beginning. Part of my salary was taken by the former budget committee, and, you know, I said, "I'll get that money back to the public." I got overruled on that, I think you're the only one that voted for it, with me. But anyway, our two sister counties, Tillamook and Jefferson, both have about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand people. Their commissioners get over eighty thousand, for a comparison, for what that's worth. I'd like to know what their clerk and assessor and, you know, county accountant, whatever, is getting. So scrolling down, Mr. Barnes's figures were accurate, and this is the commitment I made to him and the public. We eliminated two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, simply by, I'll get my notes here. If you look at the responsibilities, for example, that Director Smelsor has, she's now doing three jobs, community development director, certainly director of operations, which is her primary function, and then, back office manager, as you know, is no small thing. So I said at the managers' meeting yesterday, it's been outstanding to work with her and Summer Madison, with the efforts they've put out, how they handle people, the, the progress, the commitment, the energy, it's just been wonderful for this last three months. I hardly think that's under the dysfunction category. So there, we, we eliminated some figures there. We added, excuse me, we did add a hundred-and-ten thousand commissioner's salary, that's a plus one-ninety-seven. But when you look at the ninety-two K from former director, community, community development director Johnson, gone, County Administrator Clark Schroeder, eighty-eight, and by the way, we did promise Director Smelsor that same rate of pay, so she's working for at least four thousand left, as I understand. And gone is a building official. So I wanna just kinda summarize this in a few areas. This is the, the Huxley era, the first two years, and what that, I believe, cost the county, and I think the argument can be responsibly made. And then you go into the last two years, the staff time for the efforts to discredit other elected officials, the efforts to, the minutes in the meeting, the personnel rules, the miscellaneous lawsuits, you know, the time I had to spend staff time to defend those lawsuits, proffman advertising. We paid him forty-one thousand dollars to get a guy from Minnesota. That, that was a disaster. His paycheck in six months was forty-four, you know, his employment cost to master during that time was twenty-two. Then his severance, and then his hire of staffer, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Then the five thousand to give him to try and put me in my place on the travel policy issue. The county annex break-ins, when I asked twice to have this building properly secured and was turned down by the other two commissioners. How about twenty-one thousand Attorney Bischoff? That ended up costing us extra, just in our SEIU, just that example. Seventeen, eighteen employees end up costing us forty thousand dollars. So yeah, I can give you more information on this, but it comes about a half a million dollars went out of this county. And it has got to stop, I'm working on that, I think you're working on that. There's other issues that could be included to this. We'll put it in a better format so that the public can know what we're dealing with and what we have to try and overcome, and the clock's ticking. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, my comments. I would first like to comment, again, reiterate, on April twenty-seventh in Lower Harbor Road in Brookings, and also here on Colvin Street, we are, Corporal Jeremy Crone is asking for a national drug takeback. Anyone that has any drugs, prescription drugs, I would imagine the sheriff wouldn't mind the illegal drugs, whatever, just bring it in and dispose of them properly, rather than putting them in the trash and/or in our water systems by flushing them. We would like to see that last year, Americans again turned in four-hundred-and-fifty-seven tons of prescription drugs. Nine-hundred-and-fourteen thousand pounds of drugs were taken in last year. Sheriff, I'd like to thank you for your efforts on this, and including Curry County in this, and I would hope that you could maybe let us know at the end of this how many pounds we took in, because it's, these are good things that we're doing for the community. So that is, again, April twenty-seventh. You can bring in any drugs you have in bottles and bags and boxes, whatever you wanna bring in and turn them in.
Baggies?
Turn them into our sheriff's department and walk away, and I don't believe you will be asked a question. But I won't speak for the sheriff's department on that. I would also like to give a thumbs up to, um, to Tony Voughty. We are, we are starting to get some, some good thoughts on some of the employees that work in our county. This was a letter from John and Lorena Porter. It's a fine, I'm not going to go through the entire letter, but it's a letter that says in the address of it, "A fine employee." Mr. Voughty's work with our veterans and veteran services in the county is, is a big thumbs up to these people, and they just wanna let us know that they appreciate his work. We also had a, had a not-so-good thing yesterday with the Ahmad family. Mr. Ahmad is a Marine that went through severe brain trauma, and his, and his wife was, um, was overwhelmed with the amount of bills that they had to pay. Came to Tony's office and didn't get satisfaction, came to this board's office, and we put her in touch with Senator Merkley and Congressman DeFazio's office, and they handled this immediately. And I would like to give a, give a shout out to both Senator Merkley's office and Congressman DeFazio's office. And KP, good job, and Congressman DeFazio's office, she's my go-to girl there. Got the phone ringing immediately, I got a phone call this morning saying everything is rolling, and it looks like it'll be taken care of for this family to get funding. They're about to lose their house because of the bills that they've had to pay, because the VA didn't pick up the excess on these bills and the doctors' bills. They're about to lose their home, and their furniture is still stuck in a trailer in Southern California because they don't have the money to get it here, because they wanted to pay their hospital bills. So shout out to, to our, to our state politicians on that, great job. Something I'd like to talk about, and I know Commissioner Gold is worked, is working currently with our high schools, and I would like to ask that we, we start to look at an apprenticeship program in the county, maybe taking some high school seniors from Brookings Harbor, Gold Beach, and, and Port Orford, and look to form a, a, a small group of apprentice that would like to work in our county government, maybe working with the commissioner's office, working with our sheriff's office, working with different departments in this county, are, are, maybe down in surveying or something like that, to offer an apprenticeship program, and then possibly getting in communication with SWAC or other colleges and offering for that some sort of a, some college credits toward their college degree, should they choose to go to college. I think getting, getting kids involved in our local governments would be a great thing. I can't imagine our, our group, much less any department in this county, turning away a child that wants to learn, you know, they have a wish to become a sheriff's deputy, and they, and, you know, you put them, just stapling pages together for you and learning the basics of, of some of the things that we do here. And I know the sheriff's department might be a little bit more difficult to put someone in because of the level of security that they have to have, but certainly a lot of our county offices, we can, we can use some help. I would also like to look to form a, uh, a scholarship program for some of these kids, some of the ones that really excel, that want to move forward, that we offer a scholarship program toward their education for their dedicated service. So I would charge that, we, we can look forward to that. And lastly, I would just like to say that I would like to look at moving our board meetings to Thursdays. I think there's a lot of benefit in that. We, uh, one of the things is our AGRSs, we could have the entire weekend that situations and things happen, you know, over the weekend, that we could still turn in our AGRSs for Monday for, for a Thursday meeting. I think also for the evening meetings, it would, it would open up the public. A lot of people work four-day weeks that could come, would be willing to come to Thursday evening meetings. For scheduling, I don't know, you know, if, if we would have an issue with any of the commissioners or our, or our IT here, but it's something that I would like to look at, at least having a, a talk or workshop on, that we could talk further about it. Commissioner Gold?
Um, are you done yet? I don't wanna.
Um, that was my last thing, so yes.
Okay. I was going to say, on the apprenticeship program, I think maybe a workshop would be in order to have the superintendents, along with the SWAC dean, come and talk about some of these issues, 'cause I think this could be very beneficial, so I can arrange that. Also, on the Thursday meetings, there are times that I am unavailable because I have appointments into the future, so having those on a regular basis, I don't know if we're having them weekly, that might be a problem.
Well, and exactly, so, and I, I'm hoping that in the future, these are gonna slow down some, and we'll have them bimonthly again, but we'll see how that goes. If you wouldn't mind, though, looking into your future schedule and kinda seeing where that is, so that if we did have a chance to talk about this further, that, that we'd know where that, where this is.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that, but I know I have certain meeting day schedules that I have to go to, and they're kind of like entrenched, and I've just set aside Wednesdays for this, and...
Okay, and I understand that. One more thing I would like to say, um, next week, we are going to be having Curry General here. The CEO of Curry will be here to give a presentation, and I am hopeful that, that everything will be talked about. Any questions will be brought up, and everyone that wants to come to that meeting and interject, or at least listen to the meeting, so that we have a full understanding of the emergency room process, of, of the pluses and minuses to having a freestanding hospital in, in Brookings Harbor, or an emergency room. I know that I've been told that the emergency room will hopefully grow into having some beds there, but they have to take small steps first. So next, next Wednesday at our commissioner meeting, we will be having Ms. Razzo, who is the CEO of Curry General here, with some of her staff to address a lot of these issues and have conversation. Commissioner Boyce?
I hope I didn't interrupt you there, but you mentioned CEO Curry Health Network, Razzo, and there's a, there's a small group in Brookings that is promoting. A time when she left Tahoe, that, what a horrible job she did and all this. And I did my research, and even if it was partially true, that's what, that's what groups do. Thank God they're in a minority, they personally attack and discredit someone. So I'm, I'm glad to report, Mr. Chair, that ninety percent is unfounded, and, uh, she's certainly not perfect.
not perfect like any of us, but we're very fortunate to have her in this county. Thank you.
So I would imagine their, their financials speak for themselves. If the hospital, the people they hire, everything speaks for itself and I would urge her to bring the hospital financials here and let everyone see exactly where this hospital is. Be fully transparent with the hospital. I understand that they've hired some really new, some new really good doctors and I look forward to her, her comments next week. Looks like the sheriff has a final comment here.
Well, if you would indulge me, I did want to give a couple of updates. Sunday we had a, an accident on the Rogue River at Jim Hunt Creek. And the mother of the, the person who was lost is well-known to every, well, the whole family is. Mary Ann over at McKay's lost her son who's thirty-seven years old and named Jason James. And on a freak accident basically, a couple jet skis that were testing them out, one of them died out in the middle of the river, not the jet ski quit running. And then Jason went out with his jet ski, he was trying out and tried to aid and it flipped on him. He basically went under. There was a couple kayakers that were on the other side of the river that watched this, went over and got not only the one jet skier out back to the shore, but there was a subject who swam out, tried to get Jase, Jason, didn't make it, couldn't get him, but the kayaker got him back shore, but we're still missing Jason. And so we've, we've been out there every day. We've had a Calor lifelike, they've donated their time of their helicopters come up, flew the river from the point last seen all the way to the ocean several times, in two days. We had boats out there, jet skis, had divers in the water and to no avail at this point. So at this point, I just want to let you know that we're still looking for Mr. James.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I'd like to make a note also that here's a gentleman that his last act, potentially his last act of his life was to help someone else.
Yes.
And it may have cost him his own life.
And then a few years ago, we had a, a search for Sean Higgins up on Bear Camp. Most of everybody knows about that. And since then, the, the family, since you brought that up about this Mr. Ahmad, I think it was, they haven't been able to get any of their benefits. She's about to lose her home and everything like that. Dave Brocksmith has been working on a bill trying to get something about, you can't, if you, if you can't find the body, you still get a death certificate, but that's the issue that we're having. So I did write a letter this week and I was pretty pointing it to the fact that this needs to change and that she needs to get her benefits. And what I understand that it's looking like that she, they're going to pay out on her. So I hope that's the case.
If there's anything further on that, let me know and we can coordinate together.
Okay. I, I just wanted to comment on the travel policy real quick. I know you guys had, had voted on something here, but this is a draft, this is, the first draft that came out had some wording in there that asked for my feedback. I gave feedback on it and it said that the sheriff was exempt from this travel policy. And, and the only thing I had feedback on was the comment that was after that. Well, looking at this new draft, and this is the first time I've seen it, I haven't seen it since then, I don't see where the sheriff's exempt on that. The whole statement was taken out.
Correct.
I think that needs to be put back in. You can't control what the sheriff needs to do. I'm, I have to go to, you know, at any given time, mutual aid to say, for instance, over to Harney County, I got to travel over there. I got to travel to Salem. I'm supposed to be for, every week for four or five weeks now to work on SAR funding. I'm one of two sheriffs that are appointed to that. And there's things that I, that come up on investigations and meetings and conferences that I have to attend that I shouldn't have a thumb put on the sheriff saying, "You have to watch what you spend and what you're doing." It's well, well within my budget and I never go over the budget, so it should not, the sheriff should be exempt from, from this travel policy.
So at this moment, why don't I make an amendment to the, to that motion that was passed? Can we make an amendment to that and add the line into the draft language or the policy language that the sheriff is exempt from the travel policy?
How about this to make it simple? Up at the top it says Curry County Board of Commissioners and Elected Officials, and then you could put, "Except the sheriffs."
Well, I'd rather have the line just, "The sheriff is exempt from this."
Okay, whatever.
On that, it's clear that way. Do I have a second?
I'll take it, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes. Chair Pash? Aye. So we've got that amendment in there.
And, and once again, I want to really thank you guys for this ability that you guys have shown since the first of January and the hard work that you guys are putting into is, is so refreshing that a board like yourselves are coming together. You may not agree with, you know, each other all the time, but you do the right thing and, and that's what I appreciate.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chair.
They always say if everyone leaves a meeting happy, it wasn't a very good meeting because that's- Anyway, so we are, we are now going to enter into executive session under Curry County, ORS 192-6602D to deliberate with design labor negotiators. So this meeting is adjourned and we are entering executive session and we will be back after to, to comment on the executive session. Now we need to change a chip.
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances, but it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity that's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
Bioblitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things we know about, but a bioblitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, ninety-nine percent of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bioblitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information, they're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there, not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline and that baseline data set is what we then can use, and not to scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bioblitz can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bioblitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or, or maybe struggling, but, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bioblitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists and that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began dragonfly farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Kuzbey.
Overall tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty- They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus, as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sandcastles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very farsighted land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahots. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahots is a quiet, unhurried, artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rodendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves in the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea, never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you: to the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe-meeting-type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before-and-after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new-designed rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound of safety.
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing. We want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones are pollen cones from last year. Skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny, unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple, and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully. The scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now?
Smile.
Smile?
Uh-huh.
This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of 14.
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair? Or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing, already owed taxes. already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
That's the workshop, 2 o'clock, right?
You wonder what Louise is doing?
All right, so we're back in session. It's 11:38 on Wednesday, the 27th of March. Everyone after the executive session is to proceed as we talked about in executive session. Anything else in this meeting? This meeting is adjourned.
All righty.
Two hours, 38 minutes.